All right. Callous City Council meeting order today's day five correction six, three, twenty, twenty-five. Time is five thirty-one hours, five thirty-one hours. All right, next we have the prayer by Minister Amanda Outlaw, Greater Church, Kinston, North Carolina. Minister, you may begin whenever you're ready.
Okay. Psalms one nineteen and one oh five states. The thy word is the lamp upon my feet and a light upon our path. Let us pray. Gracious and sovereign God, we are gathered here this day in the spirit of service to our community. We thank you for the opportunity to lead, for the trusted place in us by the people of this city. Grant us wisdom to make decisions that promote justice, peace, and the common good. Help us to listen with compassion, speak with clarity, and act with integrity. May our deliberations be guided by respect for one another, for those we serve, for the values that bring us together as a community. Bless our city, its leaders, its workers, and its residents. May we seek unity over division and progress over stagnation. We ask for your presence among us this day, amen.
All may standing for the pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Swenson.
Here.
Councilmember Seeforth.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Hardy.
Present.
All accounted for.
All presidential accounted for, thank you, Madam Clerk. Under citizen comments, citizens must sign in before the start of the meeting. If they wish to address the city council, citizens should state their name and address before beginning their comments and may speak up to a maximum of three minutes. Citizens seeking assistance or asking questions, we contact by a member of the governing body or by the appropriate city staff. Madam Clerk.
Curtis Henderson.
Mr. Henderson.
Okay. My name is Curtis Henderson. I come representing Hope to Destiny for Youth. We are a nonprofit organization geared towards educating our youth on gang violence, gun violence, and substance abuse. And I come to report on the STEM program we had this past weekend. It turned out really well, and I liked the first thing, Parks and Recreation again, and the chief for sending a few officers through to make sure everything was fine. I thank you guys. And I also like to thank Mayor Pro Tim Hardy for coming out and enacting with the kids. That was real good. I enjoyed that. And hopefully next year, maybe a few more of you guys, if your schedule allows, will come out and participate with the kids. We had about fifty-five to sixty kids that came through and maybe about twenty-five adults. And the colleges showed up as well, ECU, NC State, University of Houston, Western University, and they put on quite a performance for the children, and they really enjoyed themselves, and we fed them, gave them snow cones, everything, and everything went well. And we're hoping next year for it to be even bigger. So that's about all I got to say this week, and thank you guys.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Kim Howell.
Ms. Howell.
Or am I not saying it correctly?
Is there a Kim?
Four twenty-two East North Street.
All right, thank you much. Madam Clerk.
Keith King.
All right. All right.
David Sutton.
Is there David Sutton? Yes, sir, if you would, uh, the podium to my left.
Yeah, I think I got my nights messed up, so I'll be here Thursday night for the prayer.
Yes, sir. It'll be the next Tuesday, in two weeks from now.
Okay.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes. Madam Clerk.
Tony Kinsey.
Mr. Kinsey.
Thank you, council. My name is Tony Kinsey. I reside at two eleven Vance Street. Uh, first, I want to say, last time I was here, I gave away a couple of letters of appreciation to Scott from Parks and Recorations and the Chief Goyette from the Kinston Police Department for donating coats to our coat giveaway we did for Christmas at Holloway Park. So, uh, last time I was here, I mentioned that we're doing a bike giveaway, uh, June twenty-eighth at Southeast Elementary. And, um, I gave flyers out for it. About thirty minutes after I left, I get a text from Scott saying, Tony, I got some bikes for you. A week or so later, I get a call from Chief Goyette. Chief Goyette says, Tony, the Kinston Police Department is going to donate some bikes, and I'm going to personally call all the other departments and ask them to donate as well. This is what community looks like. This is what what builds a community. When everyone comes together for a common goal, especially to help those that are unfortunate. So I started a nonprofit called the Positive Change Initiative to help at-risk, low-income youth in Kinston. And this is what this is for. So showing this support to these kids means the world. So I did a show, I do music and poetry and motivational speaking, so I did a show at Southeast Elementary. One of the kids came up to me, said, you gave me my jacket. Again, this kid, you could tell he doesn't have a lot. So that jacket meant the world to him. So he showed me, said, I have a cut in it, though my cousin cut my jacket. So I went and got him another one. This is what community looks like. So I thank y'all again for coming and helping support these kids, because these kids didn't ask to be here. And we have to, if we're going to build our community, we must first start with the youth, right? Because they're the next ones up. Some of us, we're on our last legs. So, you know, again, we have to build up these kids to make sure they are our future and our our community will stand strong. So again, our next giveaway is June twenty-eighth from one to five P M. at Southeast Elementary. Um, we'll have a DJ there. Um, I already have hot dogs and hamburgers, like about two hundred of each to cook and give free food. We're going to give free ice cream for the kids, but this is for kids from three to thirteen years old. And lastly, I have a beautiful elder that lives across the street from me that's eighty-five years old, and she says, Tony. Um, her name is Ms. Kilpatrick. She actually has a placard from the city thanking her for all the years of being a community leader. But the yard next to her, that I guess now the city has taken over, has grown up, and the weeds and bushes are about waist-high. And she's seen several snakes. This is on the corner of Vance Street and Gordon. And she said she's called the city a few times, so she's like, Tony, can you bring it up at the council meeting? So, yes, Ms. Kilpatrick, so if you can, please, um, do something about that particular plot. Um, like I said, she's constantly putting out these snake be gone and so forth, just to try and keep the snakes out of her yard. And again, I thank you, council, for what y'all do in the community and department heads for what y'all do in this community. It actually means a lot. So, thank you.
Thank you much. And we look forward to following up on Vance Street and Gordon Street as it relates to that, uh, probably nuisance, the grass cutting piece. Yes. Madam Clerk.
There are no others, sir.
All right. All right, having said that, under adoption of the agenda, if a council member wishes to revise the agenda, the motion to add or delete an item will be entertained before adoption of the agenda. Will they be in it? Will they be in it? Hearing none, hearing none, seeing none. All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Correction, entertainer motion.
Motion.
So moved, there's a second. So moved and properly second. Under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion, hearing none, seeing none, all of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, under the minutes, consider approved the minutes, city council meeting held on May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, joint meeting with the Illinois County Commissioners. And May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, would you like to entertain?
No, sir.
Having said that, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion.
So moved. So moved by Councilmember Swenson, is there a second?
Second.
So moved and properly seconded by a councilwoman, Barbara Seeforth. Under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion, hearing none, seeing none, all of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Under presentations and recognitions, recognizing electric division staff that participated in the North Carolina Ames rodeo in May twenty twenty-five, Director Steve Miller.
Thank you, mayor, council. Our electric staff is going to come up here. Uh, I'm not going to steal their thunder. You can see quite a bit of hardware sitting in front of you tonight. Uh, very proud of this group, and the electric superintendent, Tyler Skinner, is going to share some comments about what this is and what it took to get this.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Like Mr. Miller said, my name is Tyler Skinner. I am the superintendent with the Florida C F Kinston Police Department. On May thirteenth through the fifteenth, the C F Kinston was able to participate in the Nick Ames Limon Rodeo. The participants were Zachary Boone, Dylan Moody, and don't get me, don't get upset with me. And your Aguilar Villagren, is that right? Okay. We, everybody calls him Aguilar, so we'll just stick with Aguilar. Mr. Zach Boone has been with the city since November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. This is his third rodeo and has been involved with the, he has been involved with for the city of Kinston. He placed fourth in the two thousand, in two thousand twenty-four Nick Ames Rodeo, allowing him to be able to go to California to represent Electric Cities and the city of Kinston in the National APPA Rodeo. In the twenty twenty-five Nick Ames Rodeo, he placed first in the obstacle course and third in the hurt man rescue, making him fifth overall. Aguilar has been with the city since December ninth, two thousand twenty-four. This is his first rodeo ever, first time he's ever done it. He placed third in the sidewalk guy and received first place overall, allowing him a free ride with Electric Cities to participate in the APPA National Rodeo in Huntsville, Alabama in twenty twenty-six.
Wow.
Dylan Moody has been with the city since July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Dylan has not won a trophy yet, but he has placed twenty-third in the twenty twenty-four Nick Ames Rodeo and has placed fourth in this rodeo, this twenty twenty-five rodeo, and seventh overall out of sixty competitors in the twenty twenty-five rodeo, but he had, will, but we hope to see him have a trophy in his hand in the near future. We are so proud of these guys and what they have done for the city. This was the biggest rodeo to date, and out of sixty competitors in the apprentice program, our guys placed first, fifth, and seventh. This is something to be truly proud of. The rodeo isn't just climbing poles. The Nick Ames Rodeo also has a written test, twenty-five questions that have to be complete in twenty-five minutes. This is not easy, this is not as easy as it sounds. They have to, they pick the questions from the entire APPA handbook. So they have to read the whole book, because they pick questions out of the entire book, and they had to, so they had to read that whole book. This is not the first time the city of Kinston has brought home trophies, and we hope to continue. Also, I want to let the council know that other cities have reached out to us, wanting us to help train our, their employees with climbing and how to work off belt, out of, off a pole, off a belt and hooks. We have some towns come to us wanting us to train with, show them how to do it. They want to win like we do. But, um, that's saying a lot when there are bigger towns than the city of Kinston out there. And it makes us proud, and it makes my guys proud, and we're just glad to be a part of it. In closing, I just want to thank the city for the opportunity to be able to go through the rodeos and other events. So thank y'all.
Thank you, guys.
Obviously, we're very proud of this. When they bring home trophies as tall as I am, it's kind of disheartening to me personally, but very proud of our staff, what they've done. I'll let the guys all come up here, get ready to do a picture with the mayor and with you guys behind them, but I do want to thank them for the work they do. It is exceptional work. Uh, you may think, well, you got a bucket truck, you don't need to climb poles. You still have to climb poles. Uh, those of you that might have remembered back when we had hurricanes, like Hurricane Matthew, uh, when these areas are flooded and our guys are getting to the poles in boats, only one way up the pole, you got to climb it. So it's a skill that you have to know, and you have to be able to do. Very proud of them. Uh, they're demonstrating they know how to do it, and they're ready when those situations happen, so very proud of them.
And also, just to add too, echo, echo, outstanding job, and appreciate your efforts. Every opportunity I get, I want to say thank you for the hard work you put in, especially when the power go out. Uh, we'll get all the phone calls, uh, on occasion, we'll get those calls, but I can tell you this, the response time is absolutely on the money, and we do appreciate the training that you're going through in order to make it even better here. So thank you so very much for, you know, wanting to be out there, thank you for being a part of our city, and thank you for, uh, the response that you do every single time. Uh, having said that, we'll move right to the front. And by the way, I think that trophy is taller than I am. So, yeah, I'm a little short, but we'll go to the front and get a phone.
Um, I'm Derek Browning, the lineup supervisor. We also have a former Nick Ames winner, Scott Hardeston, he's one of our crew leaders. This is the second year for him, he's actually been called to be a judge at the rodeo, so I want to make sure he's recognized as well.
Redesign the park. All American City Park.
All right. So moving on, I remember two. I remember two, the redesign of the All American City Park, Leon, still, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, everybody. You guys already have the, the notes about the project, but for those who are watching on TV and in the audience here who may not know, uh, some months ago, we came to city council with the proposal to redesign the All American City Park. And if you don't know where that is, that's on, uh, West Blunt Street at North Queen, across from the Arts Council. And we had the city, um, we asked the city to take down some of the trees that were there, and we cleaned out all the vegetation, and it's been sitting, waiting for the designs to get pretty much finalized and that sort of thing. And you guys asked us to come back when we were ready to get rolling, so you could see what the final product was going to look like. Um, so we have a rendering of that, and I'll walk you through it. As you can see, it has a very large triangular shaped brick planter. Of course, that will remain, and we will, uh, re-landscape all of that. The, uh, brick pavers will most likely not be there for various reasons, but we have someone lined up, a boy scout who's doing some work on this for us, as one of his projects, uh, to pressure wash that and clean it up. Uh, Tyler, Tyler, um, from Ivy's, um, nursery is going to be doing the landscaping for us, and in those three cylinders that you see there, the red, white, and blue, uh, represent, they're just representative, placeholder, so to speak, of lighted sculpture that we'll have there, uh, that will be, um, you know, patriotic, but it'll be internally lit, I believe. And then at the front, there will be a new sign for the All American City Park that will also be internally lit. In the background, we had a discussion about the fencing there to keep the people who were using this little parklet, it's a barrier from the railroad tracks that are right there. We had a discussion with a railroad representative. He proposed the idea that we, that we pursue that, and it will, it also serves as a screen. It will have green vegetation on it that will help screen the view. The, uh, boy scout is, uh, going to do a sensory path along the, um, the way there, which is, uh, kind of like a hopscotch kind of thing, and it can be just about any shape and form and colorful and that sort of thing, and it gives the kids some activity. And there are a couple of benches there under some shade trees that we want to plant, uh, small shade trees, so they don't really get too big and cumbersome. Uh, we want people to be able to sit and enjoy this place. The whole point of this is to make it user-friendly, to give a place where people can gather, and that's called place-making. And it's also serves as another attractive gateway into downtown, so when you reach that spot downtown, you know that you're, you're in the center of the historic commercial district, uh, similarly to the Shirley Haring Memorial Garden that we did at West, North, and Mitchell Streets. One of the benches has already been purchased by the boy scout. He raised money for that, and that'll be delivered in a couple of weeks. So with your blessing, we're ready to, um, get started on it. Anybody have any questions about it?
Any questions from the council that pertains to the, remodeling or of the redesign of the All American City Park? Anything from the council?
Leon, the signs that's going to be there, do you have a description of what it's going to say besides?
Yes, it's going to say, uh, All American City Park. I think the dates for the three, if we get it this year, uh, at the end of this month in Denver, we go for that award. Hopefully, we'll receive it. I don't see why we wouldn't, but, um, those dates will be on there, and it'll also be rededicated as the, which would also be on the sign, as the Buddy and Mary Mack Rich All American City Park.
Thank you.
Leon, I just want to say that that design looked very well.
Thank you.
Looked very nice, so, uh, I hope it come to fruition.
We're ready to start on it. It'll take a little time, project at a time, but it'll happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Steele, do appreciate your efforts, and, uh, all those that are helping, uh, make that work out.
Thank you. Couldn't do it without our volunteers and the design committee, that's for sure, and all the people who are sponsoring it.
Thank you much. I remember three, storm water asset inventory condition study final report. Uh, Steve Miller.
Thank you, mayor. In, uh, twenty twenty-three, the city of Kinston got a four hundred thousand dollar grant from the state of North Carolina to complete our first-ever full-scale stormwater system asset inventory and condition assessment. Uh, before that, we've done little bits here and there with our own staff, but this was our first chance to do a full-scale project. Once we got the grant funds, we hired Highfill Infrastructure Engineering to do the work in the project, which consisted of several different aspects of assessing the conditions of the pipe system. And I've got Chris Ford here tonight, Senior Vice President of Highfill, to present the results of what they found and share some pictures of what our system looks like, so prepare yourself.
Good evening. As Steve said, my name is Chris Ford. I'm with Highfill Infrastructure Engineering. We have finished up the stormwater, uh, asset inventory and condition assessment project, finished up our report, actually. And so we wanted to present that to you tonight, and thank you for giving us a little time to do that. All right, so a brief review, the overview of the presentation. Um, we're going to talk about, uh, some of the stormwater projects we've identified based on the condition assessment. Um, we'll kind of hit it at a high level there. Uh, we'll talk about the scope of the condition assessment, what do we actually go out and do? We'll look at the methods that we, uh, use to collect the data to do the evaluation. Um, and then we'll provide some results and recommendations and, uh, take a quick look at the draft ten-year stormwater C I P. So with the study, we've identified about seven and a half million dollars with the projects, uh, to be done over a ten-year period. Um, about two and a half million of that is for Heritage Street, uh, in year one. Now, we realize that you've got a, uh, a streetscape project, uh, coming up there, and we want to make sure we get in there and take care of the curated pipe, uh, before you start that project, so you're putting good pavement over good pipe and not having to dig any of that up in the future. Uh, also, we've got a project for North Street, um, in year two for about half a million, and then to complete the work that we have, uh, identified, uh, costs about a half million dollars a year for three to ten years. So the scope of the project, um, based on the, uh, the funding requirements, uh, was to complete an inventory of the stormwater assets in G I S. And the city already had that, um, so what we did was, as we were doing our condition assessment, our study of the system, anytime we found something that was a little bit different, a different type of pipe, different location, additional catch basins, things like that, uh, we let them know about that and actually send them, assess shape files that they could upload to, um, correct their system. We also did a condition and criticality assessment of the assets. Um, we want to look at the, the condition and then determine, uh, which is the most critical, you know, which, um, project's going to get to first. Um, if you think about a pipe that's deflecting and breaking, that's, of course, much more critical than one that is not, it just may have a crack in it. Um, and that also has to do with the location. Um, right now, it's more critical, uh, if it's in, um, Heritage Street. Um, so we did perform a criticality analysis to help us set up the C I P. Um, then they also require a ten-year capital improvements plan, um, which we have worked to put together, and we'll continue to work with the city on that. Um, preliminary engineering reports for two to three of the most critical projects. Um, we've actually set up our studies so that, uh, with each one of those projects, the city can very easily go to that, pull out the description of the project, pull out the cost of the project to break down, and pull out a video, uh, a figure that shows the work. Since you've got all that ready to go, whenever you want to submit on a project, whether they're submitting for additional, uh, grant funding or, um, coming to you with a project. Then we'll also work with them to, uh, a little bit on their operation and maintenance plan there. So the methods we use to, to do the assessment, uh, the first thing is CCTV, uh, which is, I'm sure y'all know, is a camera that you put on a crawling device that goes up into the sewer, and it takes picture of the entire run of sewer. Uh, we get very good information from that. Um, we did some field observations. Uh, of course, we need to get out there and, uh, take a look at it in the field, look how it's interconnected. Um, and we also want to look at- interconnected, and we also want to look at the above-grade conditions, so that if we have to, if we have a project there and we need to excavate and replace some pipe, we want to be able to qualify or quantify the demolition and the restoration cost to put that in the total cost estimate. Then we also took some photographs within the manholes that helped clarify some of the interconnectedness of the system as well, and we did some stormwater outfall testing. The city has an illicit discharge detection and elimination program, which the main focus is on looking for illicit discharges, which would be a sanitary sewer connection to the stormwater system. Years ago, there were a lot of those. As we improve our system, we're taking those off, and we did do some testing on the outfalls to see where we may have some of those connections. So the results and the recommendations, just kind of in a nutshell, what we found out was that the clay pipe that you have, which you don't have a lot of it, but that pipe is in the worst condition. You've got a lot of reinforced concrete pipe. Most of your systems are reinforced concrete, but there's some of this old vitrified clay sewer that's in there that's, you know, sections like this. And what happens there is, as the joints rot out over time, then the spigot drops down in the bill and leaves a little opening there. And so then the stormwater can come in and wash soil in, make a bigger void around the pipe, pipe falls again, opens up a bigger void for sediment to wash in. So that's where we found most of the problems with that old VCP pipe. The reinforced concrete pipe is in pretty good shape, although we do see some locations where you've got some infiltration coming in at some of your joints, which is to be expected after, you know, being in service for a number of years. But more specifically, we'll look at Heritage Street and then maybe Little Street, and talk about the 10-year CIP. Okay, so you can see here, there's a, hopefully you can see there's a red line that runs down Heritage Street there from North Street all the way to Peyton, and actually past Peyton. All of that is the clay pipe, and it's in pretty tough shape. You can see some pictures around that that show some examples of what that looks like in Will's zoom in, or a few of those in just a minute. So the plant here, you know, along Heritage Street, not only here, but then, I'll come back to that. So here, we want to rehabilitate or replace that storm sewer that's in the ground there. Now, if we take a little better look at it, you can see some cracking in that old clay pipe. And one of the things that you look for in clay pipe to see, to determine if it's going to collapse and fall, is how much fracturing you have in the pipe. And if you get it in four quadrants, that means it's about to collapse. Pipe is strong as it stays round, right, as long as it's supported, but if you let it start deflecting, then it gets weak. And so in the picture on the left, you can see a crack down the left side, the right side, the top, and even one in the bottom. And so that clay pipe has cracked and broken, and it's sagging, and that's in pretty tough shape. The one on the right is a different location along that same stormwater system, and you can see from the top there that one of those pieces has cracked, and it's dropping down, and eventually will fall down into the storm sewer there. Also, if we look at Heritage Street from Peyton to Vernon Avenue, we have the same problems there. You've got old clay pipe there for that full length, and so, again, that needs to be either, well, it needs to be replaced. And that can be done in a number of ways. It can be excavated and replaced. We can do some pipe bursting to break that apart and pull in a new pipe. Several ways we can go about that, but obviously, as you look at the pictures there, excuse Picture there on the left, again, you see the cracking in four quadrants. You see it at the top and both sides and the bottom. And then over on the picture on the right, you can see what's a little shining kind of a moonlight sliver shape there at two of those joints. What that is, is that's the light from the camera that's reflecting off the end of that pipe. So what has happened is one pipe has dropped down enough so that the light is reflecting off of that edge. And so that tells you, okay, your joints are offsetting, which is what leads to infiltration of those joints, which is the beginning of the degradation process there. This is Heritage Street from Caswell Street to Gordon. We also want to take a look at this because it was, it's within the streetscape project. And better news on this, all this is clay pipe too, but this is in pretty good shape. There are a few sections that need to be replaced, but the clay pipe here is just in better shape. I don't know if it's a lack of, I mean, as much loading as the other pipe gets on it, or if it was installed better, but this pipe's in much better shape. You may want to consider going ahead and lining that pipe while you can, because eventually it will break down as well. And it's a lot cheaper to go in and put a liner in it than it is to dig it up and replace it, with just something like pipe bursting, a trenchless method, because you've got so much demolition and then restoration when you do that. Then West Blunt Street, of course, it, the stormwater there goes to Heritage Street, so we also want to deal with that while we're right there. We would recommend that. Definitely, we want to replace everything that's in the, within the Heritage Street right away, and then we can determine based on budget if we want to go farther than that. But on West Blunt Street there, you've got, you know, the clay pipe, and it's starting to fail, and you see a couple of pictures right there, so same conditions there. So just to summarize, the recommendations for Heritage Street are replacing about 2,500 feet of 12 to 24-inch vitrified clay pipe. The section that goes under the railroad does not appear to be encased in anything, and so the railroad will require that we do a boring jack under that. You'll jack, push a casing under there and auger the dirt out of it, and then you'll run a pipe through that that actually carries the stormwater flow. So that's the requirement the railroad will have, I'm sure. It's not cheap, but that's what they allow. From Caswell to Gordon Street, like I said, there was a little bit that needs to be replaced there, a little short segment that could be lined with a lining project so that you don't have to dig that up. And then with West Blunt Street, again, replacing some clay pipe there at a total cost of about $2.5 million. So this is the 10-year CIP. I realize you can't see it in detail from there, but that, what I want to point out is we've got about 15 projects, and again, that stretches out over the next 10 years. Now, of course, that's something we've put together and tried to kind of set up for you. We, the next step would be to sit down with Steve and Steve's guys and decide, you know, how they want to go about this. Are there any questions? Can I answer any questions?
Any questions from the council? Yes, maybe it's for Steve. What does the protection look like for Heritage Street as it relates to the recommended part of it to be replaced?
If you remember, Mayor, when we did our budget retreat, we talked about the stormwater fund, we talked about the issues that we have on that fund. To put these project sizes into perspective, our stormwater fund historically generates a total of about $1 million a year. Most of that goes toward operating expenses, doing just repairs, running street sweepers, doing things like that to keep our storm systems clean, and typically, it only generates about $50,000 to $100,000 a year. But in the proposed budget that we put together, we put together a way to fund doing these improvements on Heritage Street right off the bat, to go ahead and tackle this large project, and then pay it back with internal funds over the next 10 years or 20 years, so we can get the project done and have an annual payment that's within the amount of money that would be generated. The stormwater fee is one thing that we've asked to increase by a dollar each on our customers this year for each equivalent unit. So that's where that money would go to, is doing these things. So that project, we're working on moving forward, and it would actually include all of the Heritage Street sections that Chris showed, as well as the Blunt Street section that he showed as well, because all of that affects the Heritage Street area downtown, which is where we're looking at trying to get the street improvements for the next few years.
Thank you, Steve. I was just wanting to point that out. That's the type of work we have to get done prior, before we actually start to do any type of resurfacing on Heritage Street, and even put on what a phased implant, however, to resurface that road. So I just wanted to, you know, be clear or make it clear as it pertains to underneath the roadway and how much it costs.
Yes, sir. We're working on all the utilities. Obviously, we've got a plan in place to do this. We've got funding in place for the sanitary sewer improvements in the same area. Water system's in pretty good shape. We don't have an extensive work to do in that. And then we also have a plan with electric to be able to do some work and possibly move all the wires, as much of the wires as we can, off of Heritage Street to beautify it more like Queen Street, which doesn't have the overhead wires on it. So all of that, we're looking to get together. At this point, we're probably looking at construction starting on these projects sometime next summer, next fall, and then it'll take a year, year and a half to get those all completed, and then we can do the street work after that to make the street improvements.
Well, thank you, Steve. Anything from the council, any questions, any further questions? All right. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, we have a public hearing under physical year 2526, manager's recommended budget. Manager Bart, you may proceed whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Before I ask the mayor to open the public hearing, I wanted to give the audience an update on the budget. The manager's FY '26 budget for all 20 funds that we must balance total $133,038,55. The budget presented includes a 4-cent tax reduction, a 15% increase in sewer rates, and a $1 increase in the stormwater equivalent residential unit, which you heard Mr. Miller just speak on. The city is entering its 16th year without an electric rate increase. We don't talk about that enough. That has created some synergies for our electric division, and we've been able to do some capital reserve money for that as well. For those who don't know, an electronic version has been posted at the city's website, and printed copies are available in the city clerk's office and also at the Neuse Regional Library for public inspection. The council will hold their public hearing tonight and hear the citizens' comments on the budget, and then they will consider, they will not vote tonight unless they desire, but the schedule is that they would consider at their next meeting for a vote. During the council's retreat in April, the council spent the entire day hearing from each of the department heads who provided summary of their budget requests. The proposed budget allows for operational needs, many of which had been cut or delayed from previous budgets. In recent years, to provide a balanced budget, we unfunded nine positions in the police department to allow for salary adjustments to reduce turnover we experience and what honestly still can experience. This budget allows the city to fund two of those positions. The National Fire Protection Association standards dictate how many firefighters must be on scene to respond to emergency calls. For years, the city has struggled to meet this requirement due to turnover and the normal occurrence of sick leave. This budget funds two additional firefighter, two positions to improve our ability to meet those staffing requirements. In order to retain and recruit experienced staff, we must provide cost of living increases to our employees. Retirements and constant turnover in some areas create inefficiencies. It is common for the city to spend money to train a new employee, only for them to take their newly acquired skills and certifications to another municipality for a much higher salary. In order for us to efficiently accomplish the duties, we must maintain a skilled workforce. This budget provides a 5% cost of living adjustment for all full-time employees to improve our ability to attract and retain qualified candidates. Approximately $1 million is allocated to capital items such as vehicles and major equipment, which were, again, delayed in previous years. To be honest, if it had not been for the ARPA funds, we would be in much, much dire straits than we are. Approximately $214,500 in improvements to city facilities such as Emma Webb, Barnett Park, Bill Fay, Holloway Pool House, and its gym floor are included. Significant maintenance items such as replacing the gym roof at Mock Gym is included at $93,000. I wanted to touch on a few more highlights of the budget that coincide with the city council's strategic planning goals. Street resurfacing is funded at $655,400, plus the last installment of $50,000 to complete the rehabilitation of Hardy Road. If you remember, there were sections of Hardy Road you were actually driving on dirt. It includes continued support of the future Heritage Street project, which you just heard from, setting aside $2.9 million for stormwater improvements along Heritage Street. This budget appropriates $400,000 for a general fund capital reserve fund, which can be built upon and used for additional street work or prepare for future capital projects such as Heritage Street. Replacement of a 10-year-old phone system, the maintenance of which will no longer be supported after this year, that's $151,649. And if you've called City Hall lately and been hung up on, it's not our staff, sometimes it's the phone. Upgrade five traffic cabinets with associated wiring, $138,750. Replace 60 body worn cameras and 20 in-car cameras for the police department of $644,000. Things are extremely expensive. This system will hopefully get our police officers to download the cameras and get back on the street. Now, I think the chief would tell you, it takes about a half a day for someone to do that. Cost to refurbish the belt press at the wastewater treatment plant is $300,000. Improvements to our electrical system continue, including a new substation transformer at the Cunningham Road Substation, $2 million. Upgrades to our point of delivery number one, $690,000. If you don't know, that's the main way power gets to the city, and it needs to be upgraded. $955,818 for the replacement of, yes, wooden transmission poles on our system. I want to express my gratitude to my staff, the department heads. They held the line as much as they could. The time comes that these projects have to be done, and I appreciate the council and their time that they have put to this budget as well. And Mayor, would you like to open the public hearing for comments?
All right, thank you, Madam Manager. Do appreciate your time and efforts, and the entire team of the city council, and our entire department, all of our department heads over here. Do appreciate your efforts and the hard work you put in to actually put a budget together to be able to move forward in the current year. Having said that, open the public hearing up. For those that may speak in favor or in opposition of the manager's recommended budget, I will open the public hearing up for those that may want to speak in opposition of or in favor of the recommended budget. Will there be any? Commissioner? Yes, sir. Commissioner King, if you would like to come to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Keith King. I reside at 2172 Hardy Bridge Road, just outside La Grange. I'd like to start off by saying, this is a public hearing on a budget that is extremely important for this city, and we, if my math is correct, we've got 60% of our voters here tonight. I don't know where the other 40% are, but I'm extremely disappointed that this is a public hearing, and you don't have 100% of your voters here to listen to the public. Having said that, I grew up in Kinston. I was born and raised here. All of my 60 years, except 11, I've lived either in the city or the county. I lived in the Raleigh area from 1986 to 1997, so I saw values rise. I saw a tremendous amount of growth. During the 80s is when Raleigh and Wade County really started to boom. My wife and I purchased a home in Fuquay Varina in 1993 for $113,900. Now that home, the same home, is $370,000. Those trends have now caught up to Lenore County, as well as our surrounding counties. I bought my first property here in Lenore County in May of 97, which is 28 years ago. Now I own several rental properties in Kinston, and I have been managing those properties full-time since the year 2010. Kinston has a 58% renter occupied housing percentage and 42% owner occupied housing. That is almost the exact opposite of the state of North Carolina's average. By only reducing the By only reducing the Kinston rate by a few pennies, rent already, which many are struggling to pay, is certainly going to go up to offset rising cost of the property tax increase. Only lowering the tax rate a few pennies will create higher mortgages for folks already struggling. Also lowering just a few pennies, there'll be less disposable income for our residents to spend locally. Less money for those 42% to make repairs to their homes. From seeing your strategic plan and your budget, I know you have many good ideas to make Kinston better, and those ideas take money. However, you don't have to place all that burden on the property owners at one time. The 58% tenants that pay rent will ultimately pay the price of such a large increase. I recommend you have a small increase above revenue neutral for now, maybe a few pennies above revenue neutral, and use those tax dollars to work on your strategic plan. High tax rates deter businesses and residents from moving to Kinston and Lenore County and also from staying in Kinston and Lenore County. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Keith King. Do appreciate your efforts, indeed. Will there be any others? All right. Will there be any others? Say it again, sir? If you would, come up to the podium and you may state your name and give your comment.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm a veteran, disabled vet that moved down to North Carolina three years ago from New York. And a few things have kind of hit me like a ton of bricks after living in this community for over a year. My auto insurance is twice what I paid in New York. My property taxes are probably 40% higher than I paid in New York. And now my property taxes, based on recent estimates and reevaluations, are apparently going to go up potentially 75%. So, going from $3,200 a year in property taxes to roughly $5,700 a year, that's a big jump. It's a huge jump, especially when you're at the point of your life where you're getting ready to retire and budget. And it's frustrating to me that something that should, that the evaluation, the property evaluations, it took eight years to do this instead of an incremental thing. To throw that burden of an eight-year property reevaluation all at one time is rough on a lot of people. And a guy like me, I sit back and say, do I actually want to stay in this community? Because it's just, you know, the traffic's bad in this city? I live in an area where I count 200 to 300 cars a day going through stop signs in front of my home. I've talked to the police about it. There's nothing can be done about it. I talked to the police about, you know, when I first moved here, I asked, can I talk to somebody in the traffic division? And the young lady at the window goes, "Our what?" So, that told me everything I need to know. That's one of the reasons why my insurance is so high is because of the very bad drivers in this city. There's a lack of a police presence as well. I mean, I never see the cops anywhere. I mean, there's just a lot of discord right now based on this new rate increase. I think it's wonderful that you're going to drop four cents off the, whatever that thing is called, whatever the technical term is, but to have that huge of an increase for a family, even the families that can afford it, but what about the families that can't? What about the renters? Because the landlord, like this gentleman here, he's going to have to pass that on. And what in essence is happening, I believe, I think I read on your 460-page budget. I thought it was something from the federal government, to be honest with you. I mean, 460 pages? I think the growth of this city, I think I read it was 1.98% growth in the last five years. So, you're not, people aren't moving to Kinston. People are moving out of Kinston. And I think this is going to probably facilitate the same situation. More people are going to be moving out. And, you know, I moved down south to kind of save a little money. And, you know, I've got a next-door neighbor, a dear friend of ours, that bought a home because the taxes were affordable. Now, her taxes are going to double, and she's on a fixed income. So, I just think it's, you know, I understand the city needs funding, but I think instead of trying to get the whole piece of the pie right now, maybe just a couple slices to take care of the critical parts of this city that need to be addressed. I do think law enforcement's one of them. So, you know, I wasn't prepared to say anything. I mean, I can talk all day, and my wife will vouch for that. But I just think that's a huge burden. And, you know, I know there's a lot of subsidized housing in the city that the landlords will be taking care of via the state. You know, it's just something that needs to really be thought about. Do all of you live in the city of Kinston? Okay, right. So, it's just a big chunk for a lot of us, even those that can afford it. And I think serious consideration needs to, much like the big, beautiful bill that's going on in Washington, the big, beautiful bill that's going on in Kinston, you folks need to get together and maybe get the city, maybe get the residents involved and start sharpening your pencils and see where cuts can be made. But I just think having a, in my own situation, having a 75% increase in my property taxes, I mean, that's just, that's just a huge amount of money. I might as well just move back to New York. So...
Sir, would you give your name and residence address for the clerk?
Sure. My name is Lou. First name's Lou, last name's Blevins with a B. I live at 908 West Road. I've got good security cameras now, so don't... Three German Shepherds and a Westie. But I just think, you know, I understand this is not a wealthy town, but, you know, you're going to lose residents. I mean, obviously, if somebody moves, somebody's going to buy the home and pick up the burden. But a 75% increase in my property taxes, that's, I think the only word is outrageous, in my eyes. So, I appreciate the time. Appreciate you listening to me, and I've got good security cameras now, so...
Thank you, Mr. Blevins. I do appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Ozen. I'm a homeowner, and I've been here 62 years. And if we get a tremendous increase in our property taxes, it's a chance that if you want a fixed income, you won't be able to pay those taxes. There's a chance that you can lose your house. I know that we do need growth, but at what cost? If we don't stand now as citizens of Kinston and oppose this, where would we be? Out of all the places you can go and travel and come back, there's no place like home. You can go and have good food and enjoy good people, but it's something about when you lay your head on your pillow at night, there's no place like home. And I'm fighting for my home because I'm on a budget, I have health issues, and I'm pretty sure there's others too. But we do not need an increase at this present time. Out of 62 years, I've never seen Kinston like this before, and this is why I'm standing here. I oppose it. Thank you.
Will there be any others? Yes, ma'am, to the podium.
Mr. Old, what is your address? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Glenda Thomas. I live at 1,007 Jefferson Drive. And I want to say that a lot of these jobs that are here in Kinston are manufacturing jobs. And when manufacturing jobs are only giving you like a 20 cent or 30 cent raise every year, it's hard when your property tax quadrupled. My property tax went from $27,500 to $98,900. And it's no way that I could possibly continue staying here. Now, I'm on a short road to retirement. I can't afford it. I don't have anybody but, it's just me. So, I mean, please do something. I oppose it. Thank you.
Will there be any others? Yes.
I'm a data analyst. My name is Carol Blevins, and I'm a data analyst. And just briefly went over the budget, I mean briefly because my brain was starting to melt. But I did notice some mathematical errors, and I just wanted to find out if it's possible. And I understand that happens, but I just want to find out if it's possible to get that report on a spreadsheet or in some sort of structured language so I can take a better look at it than a PDF, because PDF is just very stagnant. Yeah, it's an Excel spreadsheet. I mean, I'm sure that your IT people had that.
So, we don't typically do that. I don't believe we've ever done it before in history. The actual entire budget is actually broken down, line item by line item.
Right.
Or maybe we can get you maybe a hard copy of the actual budget to break it down in spreadsheet format. However, it's basically broken down on paper that way. We can get you a copy of that.
And when you say a hard copy?
Paper.
Well, how about just if I provided a flash drive instead of having to print out all of that?
Let me get you with Finance Director, and maybe we can figure out what you need, okay?
Thank you. I know it's a silly question, but it just seems to be able to prove everything that you guys have done that would probably be the most efficient way to do it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm not saying I don't trust you guys. I just think that mistakes happen.
Okay.
Okay, and thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Will there be any others? Will there be any others? All right, here now. Seeing now, the public hearing is now closed. Get it back to the council. Madam Manager, would you like to interject?
Yes, sir. I did want Ms. Goodson, excuse me. Ms. Goodson, our Finance Director and CPA, if you would speak to her and get the areas that she thinks she's got some concerns about. I will say there are 20 funds, and they feed into each other, so she'll be glad to go over that with you. The general fund, the tax one, is just one of 20 that we work in. I did want to point out, Mayor, just for the group, and I heard the comments about a long time since the county has done an evaluation, and certainly we all sense that. It's been eight years. But I wanted to say that in 2017, 2018, the city, the last evaluation, reevaluation that was done, the city actually lost value. And the council at the time saw fit that they did not go revenue neutral. Revenue neutral at that time would have been to increase the taxes, and they did not. And we've been working with that for a while since then. They did try to get a little bit of ballot out in 2020 to bridge the gap. But during that time, we consistently used fund balance to bridge our gap to the tune of $600,000 in FY17, $1.1 million in FY18, $674,000 in FY19, $431,000 in FY20. And to be honest, I think it would have continued in the next year if it had not been for the ARPA funds that we received. So, we hear you. Like I said, all of us pay taxes as well. But we do have some things we have got to get done for this city, and unfortunately, they are expensive and getting more and more expensive.
We can talk with you afterwards. I can't. The public hearing is now closed, but absolutely. We can have a conversation with you afterwards, so absolutely. Anything from the council as it relates to the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say one thing. Every one of us council members that sit on this council, we live in the city as well. And we don't think we don't sit up here and have no conscience for other people, because that's not the case. I've been living here for the last eight years. I'm retired, but I still work every day. And I support this city in every way I can. You can talk to any organization, people in this community, and they'll tell you, we pour our hearts out to this city. So, we don't point fingers at any individual, and we don't do things out of a thought process. Everything that we do in life is a process. It's not that we go out and throw everything on people at one time. Some of us weren't even on the council when all the things happened before now. So, we just want everybody to know that we feel your pain. We live in the same community. We have the same problems. We got family, rental property, and so forth. And we go through the same pains. I heard a gentleman speak about his properties. He asked, "I have a three-bedroom house with two full baths. I've been renting to a lady for $700 for the last five years. I don't think nobody else in the city is doing that." So, don't think we don't feel the pain that other people feel, because we suffer too. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Hardin. I do appreciate those comments. And do take notice, Commissioner King, I do take notice, understand that I'm tracking. Also, I do appreciate the efforts that county commissioners do for our city and county. Any further comments from the council as it pertains to this public hearing? All right. Having said that, under action agenda, item number one, physical year 2425, quarter three budget status. We'll wait for Ms. Goodson to...
She went to help our citizen. We could jump ahead, Mayor, if you'd like, for Mr. Miller.
Absolutely. We go too. Steve, if you're ready. Item number six, under action, consider adoption, Madam Clerk, let the record play, amount of order. Item number six, consider adoption of a resolution of intent to abandon a public right-of-way for a portion of the North Davis Street right-of-way. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. At the May 6 city council meeting, I had presented a request to consider abandoning an unused portion of the North Davis Street street right-of-way and request a hearing be held tonight at June 3. However, after further researching the North Carolina General Statutes regarding abandoning the right-of-way, I found that although the right-of-way has never been used as a street, has never been paved or put into service, you still have to go through a formal process just as if it is a paved street. North Carolina General Statute 160A-299 addresses the procedures for street closings. And Section D of that statute states, word for word, "This section shall apply to any street or public alley within a city or extraterritorial jurisdiction that has been irrevocably dedicated to the public without regard to whether it has actually been opened." This section also applies to unopened streets or public alleys that are shown on plats but that have not been accepted or maintained by the city, provided that this section shall not abrogate the rights of a... provided that this section shall not abrogate the rights of a dedicator or those claiming under a dedicator pursuant to General Statute 13696. So in short, the procedure that we need to follow in order to abandon this right-of-way uh, is to adopt a resolution of intent to close the right-of-way, publish the resolution one time per week for four weeks in a print newspaper, send a copy of the resolution to adjoining property owners, post the notice of the closing and a public hearing at the right-of-way, hold a public hearing and consider adoption of a resolution to close the right-of-way if we decide to do so after the hearing. Uh, so in your agenda tonight is a resolution of intent to abandon, um, this one part of a block of North Davis Street. Again, it's not paved, it's between Blunt Street and North Street. Uh, it is between the properties at 422 East North Street and 510 Tower Hill Road. Um, so I request council, consider adopting that resolution. Uh, if it is adopted tonight, I'll move forward with preparing the public notice and getting it advertised in the paper. Uh, the public hearing would not be able to be scheduled until July 15th to allow for the four weeks of public notice. So if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Steve. I think, I remember the discussion, uh, that we had last time as it relates to this roadway. Um, any further discussion from the council as it relates to, uh, Davis Street right-of-way, um, and this resolution? All right, hearing none, seeing none, entertain a motion to move this resolution. So moved, so moved by Mayor Pro Tim Hardy. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Swinson. Under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, Madam Clerk, let the record reflect. I'm going to item number one under action. Ms. Goodson, uh, fiscal year 2425 quarter three budget status, uh, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet, you have an interim financial report summary which reflects nine months or 75% of fiscal year 2425. Um, it does represent activity from July 1, 2024 through March 31st, 2025. Um, combining all the funds, the city received, um, a little over $81 million in revenue and has expended, um, 70 thou, $70 million, 69,800,000. The general fund itself has derived 76% of its revenues from three major sources. Uh, of that, 52% in property taxes, 17% in local government sales tax and 7% in state shared, um, franchise, shared revenue and franchise tax. The city's overall expenditures through that, um, nine-month period for both personnel and non-labor shows spending at an average of 63%, which is proportional to prior years. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council as it relates to the fiscal year 2425 quarter three budget status? Madam Clerk, is that informational? Is that item number informational or your question?
Oh, for information only.
Right, all right, thank you much. Um, item number two, consider adoption of ordinances to close out general funds projects G9109, G9140, G9142, G9146 and G9147. Ms. Goodson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, if it's okay with you, I will not go through each individual ordinance. These are, um, ordnance, these are projects that the projects have been completed and all the necessary paperwork has been filed. And we are requesting that you, um, approve the, the individual ordinances to close these general fund projects out. I will, I'm happy to answer any questions for any, any financial questions for these projects.
Thank you, Ms. Goodson. Uh, any questions, uh, concerns from the council as it relates to, uh, the closeout of these projects? Any comments? All right, hearing none, seeing none, like to entertain a motion.
Motion.
So moved by Councilmember Swinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman C4. Under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item number three, consider adoption of ordinances to close out special revenue funds P9137, P9138, P9139, P9140, P9142 and P9143. Uh, Ms. Goodson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, these are also projects, they are special revenue funds, um, grants that were awarded to the police department in prior years. Um, and all of the expenditures have been completed when the funds, and some of the funds have been deobligated. I'm asking that you, um, approve the, or the individual ordinances to close out these special revenue projects.
Thank you, Ms. Goodson. Anything from the council as it pertains to closing out the, uh, special revenue funds for, uh, the police department? Any discussion? Any comments? All right, hearing none, seeing none, entertain a motion.
Motion.
So moved by Mayor Pro Tim Hardy. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Swinson. Under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all of us in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Consider adoption of ordinance to close out electric projects E9129, E9135. Ms. Goodson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we have two, um, electrical projects that all the final expenditures have been satisfied and all requirements have been satisfied and requesting that these electrical projects be closed as well.
Thank you, Ms. Goodson. Anything from the council as it pertains to closing out these, uh, the electric projects? Hearing none, seeing none, entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion, motion. So moved by Mayor Pro Tim Hardy. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman C4. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Item number six, consider adoption of a resolution, correction. Item number five, ARPA funds update. Uh, Ms. Goodson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is a, ARPA funds project summary. As of March 31st, we had obligated $6,387,015, which was the total amount of the ARPA funds that we were awarded. And as of March 31st, we had expended, um, $6,129,596. And it's just an update for the, um, for your information.
Thank you, Ms. Goodson. And we are meeting the date, uh, that we have to have those dollars.
They have to be spent by December, um, of 2026.
Yes, so we're allocated, we're on track, uh, for ARPA dollars. All right, thank you much. Anything from the council as it relates to the, uh, ARPA, uh, funds update? All right, hearing none, seeing none, entertain a motion, correction. Those, uh, information only. All right, item number six, consider adoption of a resolution of, I'm sorry, I'm, we're done with that. I'm sorry, Steve. We went out of order, Madam Clerk, let the record reflect that, that I went from, um, went six to one, and one back to six. Uh, Madam Manager, if you would like to entertain?
Yes, sir, we had one item. Um, Kinston teens puts on a, a Sunday dinner. The council previously approved a event permit for them. They would like to add a date, and that is June the 15th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Uh, all the paperwork has been received by the Chief of Police and I believe the city attorney has a copy. Um, we have some other dates, but we'll bring those to you at the next council meeting.
Mr. Attorney, would you like to interject? All right, thank you, Mr. Attorney. Uh, Madam Manager, are you requiring anything further?
Yes, sir.
All right. Having said that, uh, Mr. Attorney, would you like to entertain anything for tonight? Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Anything from the council?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a, um, a few items, um. The, um, young lady mentioned, uh, someone mentioned about, uh, um, Mr. Kenza, uh, mentioned about Evans and Gordon. I got a phone call on that as well. And also on, on, uh, Girl Scout Road, uh, I talked to Steve about it earlier, so, uh, let the, uh, public know that I did bring it up at the city council meeting about Girl Scout Road being resurfacing. And the resurfaces, uh, not saying that it will be done on June the night, but the city will start resurfacing on June the night.
Is it Boy Scout Road?
Yeah, Boy Scout Road, that's a Girl Scout, that's. Boy Scout Road right there in front of, uh, Dollar, what, Dollar, what, Roses, Roses and, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Mm-hmm. So I just wanted to mention that and also, uh, uh, to continue to support our, our youth, uh, programs in the community, uh, I know Holloway Center and, and, uh, Teachers Memorial has started a summer basketball league for young ladies and young men and, uh, wanna continue to support them. And, uh, don't forget, we have the graduation on Saturday, uh, for Kinston High School. That commencement will be on Saturday. So I just wanted to mention those few things and, uh, that's all I have.
All right, any further discussion from the council? Anything else? All right, having said that, um, the, uh, first let me say thank you for our department heads and everybody here that works very hard, so diligent to make sure that we are, uh, on the train tracks and stay on the tracks. Do appreciate your efforts. Thank you for putting this budget together, however. Uh, thank you for everything that you do every single day, um, and all the requests that, uh, uh, that are, are asked, uh, to you. Um, the, just update on the, uh, post office. The post office at the Plaza, we had many conversations, I've been talking to our, our local and federal partners as it relates to the post office at the Plaza reopening. So hopefully sometime, uh, in August or late August, however, uh, the post office will be open at the Plaza. Um, however, I'm communicating directly with our federal folks as it relates to that post office. So whatever updates they get, we get and communicate with our local folks and our owner of the actual building, uh, we'll give those updates as they come. But just FYI, supposedly, um, somewhere around August, uh, potentially, that, that post office will reopen again. And if those that didn't know why it was closed, it was because of the tornado that struck it in 2023. Um, however, we're just trying to get up to speed now. Um, having said that, uh, Madam Manager, go right ahead.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I, I meant to mention this during my time. Um, the only change that I have received, requested from the council for the budget was to change the council's, um, requested, the, the managers recommended for the council's budget back to the recommended budget. So that is online, primarily it affected the salary and related fringe benefits. Um, so if there's any other changes or any other questions that the council may have at this point, if you will get those to me quickly, because we will be preparing the ordinance and the rate changes for the next council meeting, that will take some time. So if you have any other changes, if you can get those to myself and Ms. Ms. Goodson.
All right. Thank you, uh, Manager Barr. Uh, will there be any further discussion before we, uh, adjourn? All right, hearing none, seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved by Councilmember Swinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman C4. Under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? We are adjourned.